Hi Dennis.
Think we have a connection here.
Hi Pam.
Hi Kathy, how are you?
I like your background.
My, my garden.
I like it more of the days.
I'm gonna leave it up all winter.
I don't blame you, I like looking at it.
I see there are two of us online so far.
Yeah Dennis is here, you and I and.
Yeah Dennis and two select board members so.
It's just six, six o'clock on my computer anyway.
Yep.
Will your background have snow on it later in the week?
Not on mine. I'm keeping green. I might change it to poinsettias for the Christmas, that's, that'll be it. Well I hope they didn't forget that the link to the meeting is in their agenda. I did.
I'm Sarah.
Oh good. It, it took me a couple of minutes to remember where the link was.
The other two are coming.
Good, good. We will start as soon as they get here.
Hello.
Hey Jess.
Sorry I'm late.
Two minutes.
Just fashionable Jeff.
Thank you Dennis.
Oh the old man glasses down the nose.
Right, just like Coach.
Just like Coach.
Hi guys.
Hi Kim.
Kim.
Okay, so we have all the selectmen, the town manager are here. It is 6:02, I am calling the meeting to order. 6:02, December 15, 2020. Just a couple of things on any motions made tonight, I will be doing a roll call of the vote, I thought that worked really well at the last meeting.
Actually it's required so.
Yeah, oh, oh good, good, yeah it worked really well, I've got us alphabetical by last name, it's a librarian in me. So, the first item on the agenda is approval of the treasurer warrants. I am open for a motion for approval of the treasurer warrants.
I move to approve the payroll warrants of December 4 and.
Oh sorry payroll.
2020.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Kim first. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the payroll warrants of December 4 to December 11, is there any discussion? Hearing none, calling for a vote, uh Kim.
Yes.
Kathy. Kathy?
Kathy looks like she's frozen.
Oh Kathy's frozen, we'll move on to Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah. Pam, yes. Can Kathy wave? I don't know because I can't see her.
Uh no, she's frozen.
She's frozen, okay. I'm going to call the vote, uh, motion carried at 4:0.
She's back.
Oh she is back, yay Kathy, do you approve your motion?
You're muted.
The joys of Zoom.
No, I, yes, I approve.
Okay, motion carries 5:0. Item 1B, the pay, uh, accounts payable for December 8 and December 15. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the account payable warrants of December 8 and December 15, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Kathy and Kim. Is there any discussion? Calling for a vote, all in favor, going with Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0. Item number two, approval of minutes for December 1st, 2020, is there any errors or missions or corrections?
I had one question, and I think the minutes are fine, but um, that last bit where it said we're supposed to read the, um, the, town committee manual and submit feedback to Dennis. Uh, is there a deadline on that?
I haven't set one, no.
Okay.
That's good. Although I'd rather not wait till spring.
Okay. So, uh, hearing no errors or missions or corrections, can I have a motion?
I mo, make a motion to approve the minutes of December 1, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve motions of December 1, 2020 as presented, and calling for a vote from Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff, you're always after Kathy. Sarah.
Yes. You've got it.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0. There is nothing under number three. Number four, committee appointments, Terry Heller for the appearance of the town committee, this is a reappointment, is there any discussion? Any questions? Love Sarah's tree, sorry, go ahead.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, ready for a motion?
I move that we reappoint Terry Heller to the appearance of the town committee.
Second.
Excuse me, it's been moved and seconded by Kim and Kathy that we reappoint Terry Heller to the T, the AOTTC. I'm not gonna keep saying it, so, calling for a vote, Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0. There is nothing under number five, we now have number six, public comment for non-agenda items, these are only, only comments on things that are not on the agenda. So if anyone has a comment, if you can, if you can do your, raise your hand, and you can become unmuted when recognized. Waiting to see if there's any raised hands, I'm not seeing any at all. Okay, we're going to move on to item seven. Item seven is the department head or committee chair. That's the monthly reports, and I'm, I'm sure that everyone took a glance at those reports. I have to say I was very happy to see that the Public Works has, um, shut down all our, our, um, closed areas for the winter and then get the snow blades all ready for the upcoming weather, so they're very on time. Are there any comments or discussion on the department head reports?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I wanted to thank Linda Perry and her excellent report and her staff, according to her report, they had all of the votes, everything that they needed to do with this past election within two days. And everything went well and she's to be commended and all of her staff and ballot clerks, everybody, who was, I imagine a, a bit difficult at times.
It was, it was a challenge with over 1,400 absentee ballots this year.
Imagine.
Wow, 1,400.
They got it done in two days, that's commendable, very commendable.
Yes it is. Under item number.
What was the percentage of the town vote?
Um, I'm not in the office and I do have that, but I don't have it in front of me because I'm actually at home. But I can look it up and email it to you tomorrow.
That would be cool, I'd like to, thank you Dennis.
So we're moving on to item number eight for the wastewater treatment plant generator bids?
No, that's the wastewater treatment, oh yes, you're right.
I read it.
Jumping ahead, so, we didn't act on those when they came in because they were all over budget and I told you we would go through and see if we could pick some things out that maybe would bring them on the budget, but we weren't able to, and so I just need everybody to, uh, reject those bids so that we can start over again.
Okay, so you need a motion to reject all bids and, and to, do you need to say that we're going to start the process or do you just need a motion to reject the bids?
I just needed a motion to reject these bids.
Okay, we're open for a motion.
I move that we reject the wastewater treatment plant generated bids.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Kathy and Kim to reject all, all bids. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, calling the vote for Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0. Excuse me, a little bit of dry paper here. New business, under new business A, renewal of the license for the sale of consumer fireworks. Al Cohen, Big Al's Outlet Incorporated, doing business as Big Al's Firework Outlet, 300 Bath Road. I am going to first put it to the board that, um, there was an attorney who was working for the Bryants who was asked if he could speak. I have told him that this is not a public hearing, so there's no speaking and it's not public comment because this is on the agenda. Is any, any interest in the board or any, uh, need for the board asking the board members in, in, in place to giving this individual five minutes of your time?
I would, I would be okay with listening to him, but I would also like to, I, I kind of wonder if we should wait until we hear back from our attorneys in the last correspondences that I read this afternoon. Um, Dennis was waiting for a call back and I don't know. If it would make sense.
Yeah, yeah, so Dennis had, had a call out to Mary Castigan. I'm not sure of her pronunciation, at Bernstein Shore. She actually wrote to him on September, or we heard from him pertaining to her information on September 28th, where she assured him that the last court decision held the Route 1 business as separate from JB's Way and that the Route 1 in, uh, business is not impacted by the, um, contention at JB's Way in any way.
And I do have an email from her that I got this evening, reiterating that stance, that the board has always construed the provisions of the licensing to apply to the property for which the license was being issued, in this case the applicant seeking a license to sell consumer fireworks at retail outlet at 300 Bath Road. The need to comply with the law is related to the sale of consumer fireworks on Bath Road and not storage works at a different location. So, the board has always been very consistent that they treat these as two separate properties.
So I have a question, because this continuously comes back. Um, what, is, is there some other recourse that the Bryants can take? Like if there's nothing we can do about the property at JB's Way, is there something we can tell them or advise them so that it doesn't come back to us?
Okay, so, the board cannot give legal advice to the Bryants. This has been put off while, while the board waited for Dennis to get clarification on whether or not the two businesses are connected because they're owned by the same individual. And, and he has been confirmed, um, by his, the opinion of Mary Castigan, a letter from the state fire marshal's office and a letter from the, this quoted the attorney general's office, all three stating that these businesses are separate and do not impact each other.
So Pam, that means there's no business license for JB's Way.
Right, so the Brian's option would be to continue on, on their course with their legal individual or team or whatever they're working with, whoever they're working with, but the town has no impact, no, um, the town has no, authority right now to say anything about pertaining to JB's Way, to the.
Hey Pam.
Business on JB's Way, that is not what tonight's discussion is about.
Pam, can, 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 can we have a.
Nope, you froze.
Vote, um, whether this attorney can, is, what's, excuse me?
You keep freezing up Jeff.
Oh, oh I'm sorry, um, can, can we have a vote for whether, whether the select board members want this gentleman to speak or not?
I just need to hear from a majority, do you want him to speak, I don't think we need.
I do know, I do know.
Okay.
Want to either, I, I think we need the, we need to just vote on what is on the agenda and hearing from their attorneys isn't going to make all that much difference because we can't. We're also named in one of their lawsuits, so, less we say, I feel safer we are.
Right, I think if, I think if this were about approving a license for JB's Way, this would be a very different discussion. But that is not what we're attending to tonight.
That's right, exactly, I agree.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Kim, of course.
So if, um, there's no, we know there's no license for the business on JB's Way. Do we as a town have a responsibility to react in any way? Because this keeps coming back in front of us, like we can ignore it because it's not the issue at hand, and at the same time it keeps coming back that there is this fireworks storage that doesn't have a business license located someplace, does that, I'm just.
So I, 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 right, I understand that, so, yeah, so I would say that probably the only thing that we could do as a town, and I don't know if it's been done yet or not, so it might already have been done, but, um, to me that is a property that's being used in a way that maybe code enforcement needs to follow up on or something like that. That is not something that the board has work to do. Um, if there's anything for a town action, I would say that's probably a code enforcement issue.
I also think there's a difference between the sale of fireworks from an entity and the, the JB's Way is not a, not a store, they're not in a business of selling things, they, that's here at 300 Bath.
You're not allowed to have fireworks in a storage unit like that unless, the only licenses for.
So, so I, I want to be really clear, is tonight's discussion has absolutely nothing to do with the, with the facility on JB Way.
Okay, I get that. So that it does keep coming back and, uh, it would be who of us to make sure that we are 100% certain?
There's one surefire way to make this go away, and that is to repeal this license ordinance and, and just allow him to operate with his state fire marshal's license. Because that's what we rely on anyways, we have no restrictions beyond what the state fire marshal wants, other than the zones that we allow them to be sold in. But as far as tonight goes, I mean, they, you know, they want to keep linking the two sites together and as I said, we've consistently kept them separate. Um, and you need to stay consistent in how you do things.
And I get that, I'm just wondering what can we do about the situation?
I.
And if it's nothing, then who do they go to?
I know, I understand your frustration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'd second that.
Okay, hang on, Jeff, Kathy. Takes me a minute to write, alright, it's been moved and seconded by Jeff and Kathy to approve the.
Renewal.
The, um, renewal of the license for Big Al's fireworks on 300 Bath Road, specifically that one location, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Calling for a vote, Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the, uh, next item on the business, on, under new business, item 9B is the resignation of Steve Christensen. Steve is, um, retiring. I have no idea, it's not me.
No, it's probably me, slipped it on my phone, rings.
Good for Steve.
So Steve is retiring. Which is sad, he and I are the same age, so that tells me how old I am now. He made me feel old.
Um, I will tell you, we had a little bit of a luncheon here last Thursday for Steve and Ellen, because last Thursday was her last day, so, the town crew enjoyed, um, some light refreshments, bid these two farewell for their retirement.
Dennis, would you please pass along to Steve my, my sincere thanks for his help on the downtown project. When he was on that committee, he was a steering voice and I, and I really appreciate his support and I'm gonna miss him a lot, I will.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss Steve on the, um, on the town's crew, but I haven't heard anything about him going away and he's terrifically strong in Wisconsin history and knowledgeable about it, so I'm hoping he's going to hang around and, and help us with all of that information that he has stored inside his head. So.
I'm already beating him up to be on the budget committee, so.
Oh yes, thank you, perfect.
That's a good idea.
Can we make it part of the motion? So we, yeah. Can't make it part of the motion, but we can all, all hardly endorse him, so I am open for a motion.
Well I move that we accept the resignation, retirement of Steve Christensen with deep regrets and best wishes on his future endeavors.
I'll second that.
It's been, uh, moved and seconded by Kathy and Jeff. And with, with regrets and best wishes, I'm sure that's from all of us, so calling for a vote, Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam votes yes, that motion carries 5:0. Item 9C, a sewer abatement for Donald and Cynthia Davis.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Jeff and Kathy have made the motion to approve the sewer abatement for Donald and Cynthia Davis, that's another summer win, um, watering program, so I'm calling for the vote. Kim.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff. Sarah.
Yes.
And Pam is a yes, motion carries 5:0.
Was I frozen in time?
And number 9D, monthly financials. Is there any questions, comments, any incoming information? On the patient.
Like to point out on the patient fund that, um, we've recouped a big chunk of what we took out already this year.
That's good news.
The fund is over 16 million, yay.
Nice, very nice. So, um, and we also had our year-to-date expense report. Were there any questions from the board on the expense report? You see it said something, I think she said we were 41% expended?
41%, 41.6% of the year.
Of the funding year. So, oh that's what it is, okay, sorry I misread that, that's what I get for looking so fast. So 41.6% through the year.
Yeah, I would point out that, um, general assistance you will see is, is quite high. I think, you know, COVID has caused requests for general assistance to jump a little bit.
Yeah. Well, thank you for these statements, uh, item 9E, we have a piece of correspondence from the Good Shepherd Food Bank. It's a nice little thank you note. And, uh, showing their appreciation of the donation. And I'm sure they will put it to good work. And I'm sure they will put it to good work. Hearing no comments or questions, we'll move on to nine F, the holiday closures for December twenty fourth and thirty first. This is to give the town employees a paid holiday for the Christmas and New Year's weekend. Is there any discussion? Not hearing, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to declare December twenty fourth and December thirty first, twenty twenty as paid holidays for town employees for twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Kathy and Kim to approve. Excuse me, calling for the vote. Kim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Pam is a yes. That's five zero. Motion carries.
Hey, you guys, you had this little cartoon in your packet.
Who drew that?
For as a thank you for for doing that, so.
Who who drew that? That that does not look like Tony.
No, that was actually Rob Lolly. He's quite the artist, I understand.
It was quite, it was very cute. Okay, so nine G, a joint meeting with school board for January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one.
Yay.
So you recall in our workshop, you asked for a joint meeting with the school board. I've met with Terry Wood shortly after that, and we could do it on the twenty sixth. They would like a specific agenda and not something just randomly thrown together. So if you guys can agree to this date, I'm meeting with her again on Thursday, we can we confirm everything out.
Okay.
Works for me.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Do any of the board members have anything specific that they'd like to
I don't know how long it's gonna be.
Could I just ask if you're not talking, could you mute, please?
I'm trying to mute it, but it's not.
It's Paulina. And then Pam, I wonder if we could have like a day or two to think about agenda items.
Yeah, I we can have some time to think about it. I don't need information on Thursday. I just want to firm up the date.
Yeah. So is everyone is everyone set with January twenty sixth?
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. And would that be at the six o'clock, like our regular meetings?
I'm not actually sure what time that meeting. I'll have to firm that up with Terry when I meet on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, so the next item is nine. Hang on just a second. Lost my place here. Sorry. Nine H, Falby LLC settlement agreement. Is there anything you'd like to share with us about this, Dennis? Or do you want just want the motion?
No, I just, Dan is on. If he has anything he wants to add, there's nothing in here that you guys didn't already know about. Yeah, no, I I've received no comments from the public about this, and this is was part of the agenda when it went out, everybody. No questions, no, nothing to ask.
Okay, so so the board is open to a motion. And if I if you would please, whoever makes the motion, please read it exactly as it is on the agenda.
I'll make the motion. To authorize, direct, and delegate authority to the town manager enter into and perform the settlement agreement with Falby LLC in substantially the form presented here tonight. The delegation of authority is intended to permit the town manager execute the settlement agreement on behalf of the town and bind and bind the town to the terms set forth therein, including dispersment of the settlement payment called for in the agreement.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Kathy and Kim to so authorize, direct, and delegate, et cetera. So we are calling for, well, first I need to ask, is there any comments or questions from the board? And hearing none, calling for a vote. Kim?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Pam is a yes. Motion carries five zero. Item nine I, earned time policy.
Did you guys all get the new one that I sent out today?
Yeah.
I don't
Wait, yeah, was it in the agenda or you sent out something?
No, there was a there was another one that I sent out today. We had a little issue combining this into the personnel policy. So hold on, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I did not get it.
I didn't either.
It basically says the same thing, only it just incorporates it into our personnel policy. And we're changing forty hours of of sick time to forty hours of earned paid leave. So it says the same thing and it's the same
Okay, and it's in line with, and this is for, let me see.
This is for the new law that says that starting January first, all part-time per diem and temporary employees must be earned, must be awarded one hour for every forty hours they work of paid leave that they can use any way they wish.
Okay, so is this, this is not pertaining to union employees?
No, the union contract is the is the driving factor until we renegotiate those contracts.
Okay, so this is for non-union employees only.
And this will actually, the biggest impact here for us would be EMS, the part-time police officers and the one or two part-time people in public works. And Dwayne already had an earned time policy for the community center. We just have to tweak that so that the wording is is correct for the state law.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So Jeff and Kathy have made a motion to approve the newer, the changes to the earned time policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, calling the vote for Kim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Pam is a yes. So that's five zero. Motion carries. We are up to item number ten, the town manager's report.
Guys all had a copy of my written report, so if you have any questions, I certainly will entertain them.
Thank you for putting it in that form.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Thanks a lot, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay. So other board business is an executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Not needed.
Not needed.
Hey Pam, can you say one thing?
Yes, sir.
It's a ma'am.
Oh, I thought I didn't hear who said it. Okay, sorry. I actually thought it was Dennis that said it.
No, it's me. I just wanted to, I I meant to say earlier and then I didn't. I just wanted to publicly commend the Parks and Recs Department for doing such a great job trying to reduce their expenses to keep up with the pandemic and to continue to offer so much service. I know my family personally benefits from it and so do many others. Lots of the kids in town are utilizing the place for their remote learning days. And I just really appreciate it. I saw, you know, Chelsea out there making wreaths from like limbs that she cut out of the woods to save money. I was like, oh, that's just really nice. I appreciate it and notice it and thank you so much.
Can I say something?
Who's speaking?
Dwayne.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Hi, Dwayne.
Hi, how are you? Actually, I want to say thank you, but I also want to say the tree lighting went good. We had a great show of people down there for that. We had about seventy-five, eighty people, I think, in total.
Oh, wow.
Basketball, we started this past Saturday. You know, it's all skills and drills and all that type of thing. There's no playing of games or anything like that yet, but, you know, we're still doing everything that we possibly can right now and still moving forward. So the pool is actually being rented by four different high school teams right now. So that actually is gonna, that'll help on the revenue side a little bit. But it's also in a time when, you know, our patrons themselves haven't been using it on a regular basis anyway. You know, most of the rentals are at night, so that actually works out for our benefit.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks, Dwayne. Sounds good.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
Okay, we are up to item number twelve.
I just had a quick question, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Dennis, did you hear back from DOT about why the lights downtown are still not flashing?
Yes, because they said that was never part of the agreement to start with.
Is that something we can appeal?
I can, I can try. You know, they are under their control, so we can certainly, I can certainly try to make the case that it's not necessary for them to be operating this time of the year.
Because doesn't the twenty seven and Route One want to eventually change to flashing or did at one point?
Yeah, I don't think it does now, but I don't think there's any reason why the ones in the village need to need to stay in operations mode. So I will make I will make a note and see if I can get Ernie to do something for that with us.
Thank you. This seems like a lot of people standing around or sitting at the end with no one there.
I know, because I've had to do it myself. I would note to you guys after the meeting, you'll need to get some docu-sign paperwork.
Okay.
I would just like to comment that when you're sitting at a light in town, you have the opportunity to admire the beauty of a lovely little town.
Good for you, Kim.
Lucky. If I catch the light and I hardly have to, I get to stop there, I could go like, oh, gosh.
I'm just saying, I walked a treat today from my parents' house and I took more time standing waiting for the cross signal than I did the entire trip, so.
Wow. Okay, so we are back to item number twelve adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Kathy and Jeff, calling for a vote from Kim.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And Pam is a yes. Motion carries at six thirty-eight P M. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Pam. Good meeting.
Good meeting.
Sarah, I like your tree, Sarah.
Thank you. The tree is gorgeous.
I love it.
Oh, wow.
I love it. I love it.
You too.
You guys have a good night.
Good night. Merry Christmas.